This meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Clear Lake City Council. Today's Thursday, May sixteenth. Madam Clerk, can you read the roll?
Councilmember Slaton. Councilmember Pardok. Councilmember Kramer. Vice Mayor Overton. Mayor Claffey.
Here. Councilmember Sluton, can you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Councilmember Pardok, could you lead us?
Yeah, if I might just have a moment of your time, I have a little bit of news to share with the community. And then I'd like to have a brief prayer. If you'd like to join with me, you're welcome to. If not, I understand. On May tenth, just a few days ago, a former mayor of our city, Bob Malley, passed away at his home in Tennessee. He was surrounded by his family. And we'll very much miss him. One of the things that I thought most about Bob is he was a true community servant. I remember him when he worked at the sheriff's office. You could oftentimes find he and his deputy partner at the Lake Shore Fire Department, not on Olympic, but down here on Lake Shore Drive. Doing his reports and that kind of thing. I know that he served on our, most recently at the Lake County Planning Commission. But he also served here at the city of Clear Lake, and he had four terms as mayor. And he got a lot of things done, I think, for the betterment of the city. He's a good man and a good friend, and he will definitely be missed. So if you wouldn't mind, I ask for a moment of silence as I offer a prayer. Our Father in Heaven, we are so grateful for those who come out and they serve in so many capacities. They serve as volunteers, they serve as public servants, police officers, admin staff. And all those who work in the emergency services, emergency responders, to make this place our home, a better and safer place to live. Father, I ask that you would come together with us to lead us and guide us with your spirit. That we may make good and wise decisions for the betterment of this community and those who live here and visit. We're so grateful for the many blessings that you provide. Say this in the name of the Savior, Jesus Christ, amen. Thank you all very much.
I have a motion from Councilmember Pardok, a second by Councilmember Kramer. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? All right, moving forward. Presentation number one, and I know the reason we're all here today, the presentation of May's Adoptable Pets. If North Bay could come on in. All right, next we have a proclamation declaring May eighteenth through May twenty-fourth as Safe Boating Week. Whereas National Safe Boating Week is observed to bring attention to important lifesaving information for recreational boaters. So that they may have a safer, more enjoyable experience out in the water throughout the year. And whereas in the calendar year of two thousand and twenty-two. The U.S. Coast Guard statistics reveal that recreational boating fatalities decreased. Of the six hundred and fifty-nine people who died in fatal boating-related accidents in the United States. Four hundred and forty-five of these fatalities were due to drowning. And three hundred and seventy of these boaters would be alive today had they had worn their life jackets. Whereas the Lake County Flotilla has continued to provide free life jackets to youngsters by participating in community activities. Which promotes child safety and educating the boating public in safe boating practices. And whereas Flotilla oh eight oh eight of Lake County. Will continue its efforts to educate the boating public by restoring safety patrols, free vessel safety checks. And encouraging the public to practice safe boating habits and to wear your life jackets. Now, therefore, be it resolved. That the City Council of the City of Clear Lake does hereby designate the week of May eighteenth through May twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. As National Safe Boating Week in Clear Lake. And urges all users of Clear Lake, Lake Pillsbury, Blue Lakes, and Indian Valley Reservoir. To safeguard their lives by wearing life jackets when boating, exercising safe boating practices, and vote responsibly. Signed, May sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, by me. Oh, please.
Hi, this is Mayor Engie. The Coast Guard Auxiliary is the civilian part of the United States Coast Guard. And we follow the regular Coast Guard rules. Everything is pretty much the same except we're just civilian volunteers. Our primary mission is to educate the public in boating safety. And related things for safety. As was mentioned in the proclamation, we have had a life jacket program. It's been going on now for fifteen, eighteen years. Every year, and we get donations. This last couple of years, we've had a very generous donation from the Canockdy Women's Club. We take that donation and we buy life jackets. And primarily, we're looking at kids twelve and under. And we have a meeting, Children's Fair, that we just had recently during Boating Safety Week. Sometimes we have one. Our next one is what, June?
June fifteenth, over at Lucerne at the Canockdy Bait Shop. We'll be giving away life jackets for twelve years and children twelve years and younger. And they have to have their parents with them, and we weigh them and then fit them with the correct size of life jacket.
So their kids are related to cool options, not just to give a life jacket to a child. But to give the expression and everything to the parent, so the parent has what is necessary to know how to fit them. In addition to the boating safety thing and things like the life jacket. We do operate on the lake for boating safety where we can, someone who's in distress at whatever. We can lend our assistance to them at times, even to them to the mayor's safe harbor or wherever. And mainly just help anybody that's in distress on the lake. We have very often, very good, when you share control. And assist them when they have a situation, rescue situation going on. We can provide perimeter protection for events. We used to do a lot of it for fireworks and so on and so forth. And in general, just trying to keep people safe.
That's what we do.
All right, we will move to public comment. This is a time for any member of the public to address the City Council on any matter. Not on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. Please note the Brown Act, with limited exceptions, does not allow the council to discuss issues brought forth under public comment. The council cannot take action on non-agenda items, and concerns may be referred to staff or placed in the next available agenda. Please note that comments from the public will also be taken on agenda items. So if you're here for something else, please wait until that item comes up. And finally, when you come up, please state your name, your city residence. And you'll be limited to three minutes. We have a timer right over here. So if you hear the beep, just summarize it. We have a lot of folks here, I think, here to talk about the same topic. So if someone has said what, the bulk of what you were going to say. You know, feel free to raise your hand, feel free to clap. We want to make sure everyone has a chance to say what they want to say, but also say some unique things if necessary. So with that, I have a list of folks. Oh, also, if you're on Zoom, you have the opportunity to comment on Zoom. After we address all the folks here in the chamber, we will look at our Zoom comments. So I will start with the ones who have handed in the paper. We'll start with Mr. Jeff Davis.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jeff Davis. I am the General Manager of Highlands Water Company, and I live in Clear Lake. I would like to thank all those who came in support of myself and my staff and your water company. I ask you please afford this governing body the respective reserves. As you are all representatives of us. Right? I am not a politician. I do not like mudslinging. In fact, I think the city has done a pretty good job. Recently, the Measure V roads, awesome. The police department, when I've had occasion to use them, is exceptional. And I could go on. And I know that the water company, because I've been there, has made incredible progress over the years. The truth is. The truth is out there, so are opinions. Keep asking questions and try to sort out the facts. More to the point, up until very recently, I've felt the city and water company's interests have aligned fairly well. I cannot explain the very recent shift in that attitude. I can only express. My continued willingness to work with city staff on how we, together, can best meet the needs of our growing community. As you already know. I cannot and will not in any way engage in negotiations aimed at the takeover of the water company. As I do not feel it's in the best interest of the shareholders who actually own it. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Frank Costner?
Good evening, council members, members of the staff, and members of the public. Nice to see you all here. So I am Frank Costner. I'm the General Manager of Canockdy County Water District. And I'm a citizen of Clear Lake. I live in the avenues. Just want to talk a little bit about the city's webpage that they posted about the water companies. I believe that there's a lot of inaccurate facts in that webpage that I would like to clear up. So about several months ago, I kept on hearing over the past few years that. We have inadequate fire flows, we have deteriorating facilities, and city council members will keep repeating those. Those statements. And so I wanted to clear the air and talk to the city administration directly. So I invited the city administrator, Alan, to have a tour of our facilities. And so I conducted that tour with Alan. We spent probably two or three hours touring our facilities. So we looked at the raw water pump station, the treatment plant, and all the improvements that we've been doing. And after that tour, Alan reported back to the city council. That he thought Canockdy County Water District was doing a great job in improving their water system. So during, after that time, the city council had formed a water committee. And that's two members of the city council who are studying the water issues in Clear Lake. So that water committee met with my board of directors. We are an independent special district at Canockdy County Water District. We're a public agency. So everything we do is out in the public. There are elected officials, just like the city council is. So during that committee, during that meeting. The city proposed us to be a subsidiary of the city, and the board and the city council. Would combine and run the water company together. Well, come to find out, after we talked to our lawyer about just finding out if that was even possible, that was not legally possible. So. Then in the webpage, it says that, you know, the city has been rebuffed about communicating with the water districts and things like that. And that is not true. So during the past four years, Canockdy County Water District has been improving our treatment plant. And we've spent seventeen million dollars in grant funds improving our water district. We've rebuilt and replaced many treatment items, including a new raw water pump station. If you go down to Mike Thompson Harbor, you can see the pump station, seventeen million dollars. So in the webpage that the city posted, there was many false statements written about the Canockdy County Water District. So I asked the city, I've continuously been asking the city. Including Councilmember Sluton and Alan Flora, city administrator, for a list of items that were deficient. That the fire flows, hydrants, and every, any treatment items that there was, was that my timer?
I'll give you a few moments.
So anyways, and I still have not received a written list of deficiencies for the water company. So we just feel like there's a lot of false things that are written in the webpage, and I just wanted to clear those up. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, just to clarify, so you said there's inaccuracies on the website, but then you don't have the info. Are they inaccuracies, or you don't have the information to validate them?
No, I asked for a list of items that the city council thought was inadequate, and I have not ever received a list, a written list. There's this, there's this opinions in the webpage.
Thank you.
So I've asked for a factual list and not received it.
Thank you. Mr. Costner? Mr. Keith Ahart?
Good evening. I'm Keith Ahart, Operation Superintendent for Golden State Water Company. I'm not going to get into any of the back and forth issues, but what I do want to say is that I've been. A water professional in the city of Clear Lake for thirty-five years. Frank's thirty-plus years, Jeff's thirty-plus years. And we're all pretty knowledgeable about what goes on here, and we've all dedicated our lives and our careers to the city of Clear Lake. And I just want to make sure that that's clear to everybody in this room. And that Golden State Water Company stands with Highlands Water Company. We stand with water professionals in the city of Clear Lake. Thank you.
Michael A. Lopez? Okay, thank you. James Hammond? Or James Hummel?
I'm Jim Hummel. Live up on Smith Lane. Russ is one of my neighbors. In fact, I've got his disc on the back of my tractor right now. So, you know. Oh, yeah, I take good care of your stuff, Russ. I always do. And that's a back and forth, you know. We're neighbors. We're friendly with each other. We help each other where we need to. And if there's a need, we do that. I've seen the water company come out and perform stuff in the middle of the night that was exceptional. I've seen drunk kid our water line one night over on our bridge. I think it's been hit twice, in the same, probably the same drunk, but. They were out there a couple hours, they had it fixed. You know, they have the parts, they have the stuff, and they have the knowledge, and they're there. And Jeff and his guys, they come in and fix it, you know. I've only known Jeff a few years, but I've seen what he's done has been exceptional work. I've seen him work out on the pressure main out on. Burns Valley Road there in front of the senior center that blew up. And I've seen him go down and park trucks there at night and stuff to keep it safe. So people wouldn't get into that and drive off into a hole that they're working on while they were waiting on whatever. You know, I've also seen. Stuff that hasn't been finished, such as plates still on the road on that hole that blew up two months ago. You know, the line's fixed, this and that, nobody's, you know, pulled the plates and fixed the road. Is that a county deal? Because it's a county road? I don't know. That's just a question I have. But I keep driving over them plates two or three times a day. And so. It's a small concern, but. You know, you guys want to take over the water company, you want to take over the fire company, you can't handle what you got now. Okay? So, and I see it. The people that live here see this stuff. The roads are crap. You know, you guys keep getting money, you get bonds, you get all this stuff. We keep voting all this stuff in, vote stuff in, vote stuff in, give us money, give us money, give us money. And there's roads all over. You won't even work on our road because we're not incorporated. But that's a bunch of crap. Because we got to pay two hundred dollars for every person we can get on our road to try and get enough base rock. To fix our road every year because the city don't do nothing. We buy the timbers that fixes our bridge because our city don't do anything. Well, you take our taxes. You take our money. We're in the city, I'm on a map of the city that says Smith Lane is a city road. How come you don't fix nothing? How come we have to put the people together and do it ourselves? I'm out there on my little crappy little, decent little tractor, but it's small. And I'm fixing a road, doing roadwork that I did for thirty years out in the field. And because we have to all pitch in and try and get enough base rock to do our road. because we have to all pitch in and try and get enough base rock to do our road. And then people at a ten mile an hour road go down that road at forty, fifty miles an hour and all they do is create dust and dirt that blows in from the coast and covers everything we own with dust and dirt.
All right.
So anyway, I I don't see you guys handling what you got now. So maybe you guys could put it together and and leave these people alone to let them do their job. They do a great job.
Thank you. Mr. Brian Hughes?
Good afternoon. My name is Brian Hughes. I'm general counsel for Highlands Mutual Water Company. My statement is in response to the letter sent to Highlands Mutual Water Company from the city of Clear Lake. In this letter, there was a request for certain documents. There was also a request to rehave the shareholder meeting to elect the board. This letter is in response. This letter was provided to city's special counsel, Ryan Hamilton, yesterday. Hopefully you all have received a copy of this letter. I'll be reading a few excerpts from it. In your letter, you alleged that the shareholder meeting of the Highlands Mutual Water Company was improperly held because the owners of the undeveloped parcels of land within the service area of the company were entitled to become shareholders in the company and that those owners therefore should have been issued stock and given notice of the meeting. This allegation is made in support of your client's efforts to ambush the board of directors at the annual meeting that was held on April tenth. With the demand to create a right to vote for a group of owners of undeveloped parcels who, one, are not shareholders of the company. Two, have never been attempted to vote at an annual meeting of the company and three, have never paid any fees or assessments to the company. The bylaws state which landowners are entitled to become shareholders and the company has a process whereby those who are entitled to become shareholders are actually issued shares. In the long hundred year history of the company, the board is not aware of a single incidence where the owner of an undeveloped lot made a request to become a shareholder without seeking first a water connection. In fact, the city of Clear Lake has long been a shareholder of the company and has lots with connections and lots without connections. The city has never raised an issue or alleged any inconsistency in all of its years of being a shareholder. So what has changed? Based on statements that have been made in public, what has changed is a political decision by the city to align itself with certain landowners and developers that want to influence decisions regarding the cost of water service and development without going through the deliberative process of ensuring that the company has fair rates for all of its current shareholders. As no valid reason has been put forth for the invalidation of the April tenth annual shareholder meeting, the request of the city for the company to hold a new meeting is denied. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Mark Coats, president of the board of directors of Highlands Water Company. I'm basically here to thank the community. We have gotten so much support from everybody that comes into the office. Everybody wants to help us fight this. And I just want to thank them all.
Thank you very much. Rachel Widener?
Hello. Good evening. My name is Rachel Widener and I am a resident of Clear Lake. I'm also a teacher in the Conocde Unified School District. And I'm a mother. And today I just wanted to start by saying how grateful I am about the splash pad. Kind of a different, little bit of a topic, but I'm so grateful for it. Last summer, it really just made so much joy in the lives of our youngest residents. But with that project, I don't quite feel like it was thought all the way through. And that's kind of where my concern lies. So with that splash pad, we quickly realized that there was a lot of debris. We quickly realized that there was no seeding. And I reached out to multiple city council members multiple times to share my concerns. You want the area kept clean. You want this, you want that. Well, you went ahead and you put it near no trash cans. There wasn't one to be found. And after a few weeks, finally, you guys chained a can from like Mendo Mill to a pole and called it good. Then we said, hey, there's no benches. You guys want things supervised and there's no benches to be found. And I was actually told by Russ Perdok that unfortunately, there wasn't money for it. These benches are expensive. I understand that and that they would need to be donated. So I've got a few questions. If you cannot purposefully and long term plan something as simple as a splash pad, what makes you think that you can plan out the takeover of three different water companies in our city? It doesn't make sense. And you don't have time and money for benches because maybe you don't think that they're important. But why do we have so many taxpayer dollars going to pay your lawyers to come and harass us? It doesn't make sense. People talked about roads. Yeah, same thing happened to us two years ago. You guys outsourced for the roads behind foods, et cetera, to be redone, even though you have put so many dollars into new equipment so that we could do it ourselves, be self sufficient as our small community. But instead you outsourced it. And again, I reached out to multiple city council members to let them know, hey, they skipped my road and a few others. Are they done? Are they coming back? Multiple times they didn't believe me until they came out for themselves and saw that, hey, yeah, they actually skipped one of the most traveled roads, the one in front of the church. And instead of having that company come back, you said, hey, we need our money back. We need it to be done. And you promised it would be done the following spring and it wasn't done. And you promised it would be done the following spring and two years later it's not done. The same thing can't happen with water. This is what people need to live. If you make a mistake and forget about an area, people are going without and it's not going to mean that their road isn't great. It's going to mean that they don't have the basic necessities that they need to survive. This is out of hand. Leave the water companies alone. We have more important things to deal with and we shouldn't have to be fighting each other right now. We're all one community. Act like it.
Michael Graves?
Hello. My name is Michael Graves and I live here in Clear Lake. This is in regard to your release for the water providers of Clear Lake that stated your discovery of water quality problems, inadequate fire flow, affordability, infrastructure at risk of failure, lack of transparency, inadequate supply to support growth. If this is true, the California Water Board would have taken action. We're in compliance. They make that decision, not you. You make these charges to manufacture crisis and only you, the city of Clear Lake, can solve this. It's an old Joseph Goebbels tactic. You tried to steal the Highlands Water Company with fraudulent votes, ninety two of them. You know they were no good. You lost. You want those illegal votes validated in court. You don't want the water company. You want a control to steal it from the shareholders. Then loot the company, then sell it to the highest bidder. At below market value, it would all be profit to you. It's all about the money. Please, I beg you. Don't let the new city motto be by hook or by crook. And people, never surrender your shares to the city. It's an interest to no one. And like I said last time, every time we're out working on something, people come up to us. First thing they say is, when do you plan to fix the roads? Thank you very much.
Eric Lee? My name is Eric Lee. I live here in town, over on Green Street. Anyway, I just wanted to come and make my voice heard. So and I know you guys are under a lot of fire tonight, but I think you brought it on yourselves. Anyway, we we city of Clear Lake is the largest city in the county. And we're broke. And I don't understand how you guys really think that you can take over the water companies and make it work when all government is good at is spending money. And I would really respectfully ask you all to reconsider. Leave the water companies alone. You don't need to screw something else up. Stay in your lane and do what you're you're hired to do is take care of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Alice Reese?
Good evening, council and staff. I just wanted to say it's just almost embarrassing to be here and witness everything that's going down. And wouldn't it have been better just to be able to talk to people and maybe have a town hall meeting so that we knew what you wanted and what we could do about it? Really, that's all I really wanted to say. Just I'm sorry that just happened.
Thank you. So that was the final name submitted, but if anyone here in the chamber would like to line up here and and make some comments, you're more than welcome to. Come forward. Yep. Remember, just start with your name and city.
My name's Tally Duke and I live in Clear Lake. And good evening, council. I was really shocked when I heard this, that the water companies were being consolidated and consolidated under what and by whose influence is it being consolidated? There was a statute that was passed during Obama's reign and it's COPA, C A P O, capo. And they've they're closing down the farms and the and the market vegetable garden farms in Oregon. Look it up, look it up, look it up. And in Maine, and they're taxing them. Your well is not yours. The stream that's running through your property is not yours and it's all about the Green New Deal. So that's what's going on. So who's moving in here saying, hey, we have a great idea. This is a blue state. Oregon's a blue state. Maine's a blue state. And that's what's going on.
Thank you.
Hello. My name's Pamela Centelli. I work in Clear Lake for Highlands Water. I am actually a customer of Highlands Water for a house that I own on Ridgeview. I just want to give a thanks to the community for support and all of them tonight speaking on our behalf. Want to give a little bit of enlightenment as far as an operator goes. I've been in the industry for over a decade, actually fourteen years. I am a certified wastewater operator, also a T four treatment operator, D two distribution. It did not come easy. It did not come from a Cracker Jack box. It did not come easy. It was a long school, long nights of studying. There was many dollars spent on education, on recertification, continuing education, exams after exams. And you cannot get a wastewater cert unless you work at a wastewater treatment plant. So that was the hardest one to get. I just want to know that everyone understands as an operator, redundancy is not in what we think as more than one certified operator. When I go to work at seven AM and something happens because the lake decides to turn and I'm there at ten o'clock at night and I can get an operator to come in and relieve me so that I can go home and get four hours of sleep to come back at two AM and maybe make it till ten the next night, that's not redundant to me. That is another certified operator that is can take vacation and overtime and stuff and relieve another operator that's been there for long hours. So I just wanted to enlighten the community and the people and the staff here that an operator works very hard to provide a safe drinking water. You can put miles and miles and miles of pipeline in. You can put a two story building. You can do all these things in infrastructure, but you're not going to change the water quality. The lake is what it is and we provide a safe drinking water under the state of California. Thanks.
Are there any other members here in the chamber that would like to come forward?
My name is Bill Troop. And I just learned about this recently and was kind of shocked. And it has put me in mind of another similar meeting we had several years ago about mandatory garbage pickup. And there must have been two dozen people. I don't really get just about anywhere. And there must have been about two dozen people arguing against mandatory garbage pickup. And the city council ignored them and put it in anyway. We need to see to it that that does not happen again. Nobody wants this except the people who think they can benefit from it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else here in the chamber? Yes, please.
My name's Gene Hummels. I live in Clear Lake. Known rest of most of my life. You guys don't need to take the water over. You got way more problems on your hands than the water companies. I've lived up here since fifty eight and this place sucks anymore. The roads are terrible. You go through town, there's vacant lots all over grass. My street was terrible for how long? I asked Russ when he was mayor, what can we do about it? They finally come up the other day after seventeen years grating my road. I told the guy that was on the crew, I said, are you going to put base down? Well, no, it's got base on it. I said, I hauled the base on this road seventeen years ago. Nobody out there has done anything. You guys don't do any, you need to take care of what you do and leave the rest of the stuff alone. It's a shame. This town really, it's disgusting when you drive through it. All the vacant lots and through town where businesses used to be. I don't know.
Thank you. Anyone else here in the chamber? Madam Clerk, any comments on Zoom?
Any comments on Zoom, Mr. Mayor?
City Mayor?
Yeah. Obviously, we can't have a discussion about this because it's not on the agenda, but you know, there's been a lot shared and we have a lot of folks who some which are probably shareholders in the room. And as part of my city manager report, I'd like to share a few thoughts if it's okay with the mayor. Everyone is aware of the safe Highlands water messages posted around town. We agree Highlands water does need saving. Although we have three water companies operating in the city, including Conocde County Water District and Golden State Water Company, when we talk about failing infrastructure, lack of transparency, water quality issues, limiting development potential, we are primarily referring to the Highlands Water Company. If the community wants to see the city add new retail, healthcare or housing and have clean, safe, affordable drinking water, the status quo is not going to get us there. The mailer that was sent to customers states the city's interest in creating a combined water system as a public utility threatens reliability, safety and affordability. I'd like to briefly address each of these. Simply put, Highlands existing system is not reliable. Highlands has been listed as failing on the water board's human right to water list twice since twenty nineteen. It is currently listed as potentially at risk. Highlands's own engineering firm confirms that their infrastructure is deficient in four categories. I'll summarize the four categories. Water supply for the service area is not anticipated to be sufficient for water demand projections. The water treatment facility is at capacity and cannot treat sufficient volume to meet water demand projections. The primary treatment plant drinking water storage tank has a leak and repairs and maintenance operations are needed for all existing water storage facilities to meet regulatory requirements. The existing distribution system is, and I quote, aged, undersized and does not provide The existing distribution system is, and I quote, aged, undersized and does not provide sufficient pressure to provide fire flows in what is undoubtedly one of the most fire prone counties in the state. A couple of specific examples. Tribal Health's $25 million medical clinic would not be open today without the city's intervention and investment in Highlands water system. Highlands could not provide adequate fire flows on Olympic Drive until the city installed a new main connecting Olympic and Burns Valley Road, uh, water mains. One of the grocery stores, um, in town was on 24 hour water watch for months on end because a fire department test of the fire protection system revealed there was not enough water pressure for it to operate. Highlands initiated engineered plans to upgrade a section of the system that was, has serious and known deficiencies and is still hindering development in the area. These plans have apparently been dropped since Highlands recently hired another contractor to retest the system and now it passed. These examples, along with our other situations we've experienced, have us greatly concerned. Now let's talk about safety. The hundred-year-old fragile distribution system requires frequent patches and repairs that often necessitate boil water notices for customers. This is because when a repair is dug up, contaminants can make it into the pipes, making the water unsafe to drink until the contaminated water moves through the system. But even more concerning, Highlands has suffered numerous and repetitive violations of hal代ic acids testing with at least six known violations over the past five years. Why should you, as a Highlands water user, be concerned about hal代ic acids? Over long periods of time, exposure to levels of, um, hal代ic acids at or above the maximum containment level can cause injury to the brain, nerves, livers, kidneys, eyes and reproductive systems. Further, the reason for specific testing around HAA five are because ingestion and exposure are known to result in increased risk of cancer. Now let's talk about affordability. While Highlands isn't the most expensive water in Clear Lake, that distinction belongs to Golden State Water Company. Rates are nearly twice Conocdy County water rates and well above the state average. Highlands has the distinction of earning a high-risk classification on the state water board's affordability calculator. Would the claims that Highlands becoming a city utility cause an increase in rate? While we cannot guarantee never being required to raise rates as a city utility, we do know that any increases would be smaller and less frequent due to the city's better access to outside funding. While the city has been successful in infrastructure grant allocations of over 30 million in the past five years, Highlands has received zero dollars of planning and construction funding since at least 2017. This type of funding offsets the need to increase customer rates. There's going to, to be the need for an enormous investment in Highlands treatment plant and distribution system in the coming years. One thing would help, that would help is consolidation of the three systems. As an example, and Frank mentioned this earlier, Conocdy County Water District is finishing up a $10 million grant-funded investment in its raw water intake system and treatment plant. Um, would it be more cost-effective to utilize and expand this newer plant rather than build another additional one? There are three water treatment plants in the city of Clear Lake. Finally, the rumors circulating that the city's interest in consolidation is to raise rates and use the money on other projects that are not in the water system or simply scare tactics. As a public utility, rate increases must be used in the system. Further, customers would be notified and have a direct vote in proposed increases at a public meeting, which is required by state law. This leads to another critical concern about Highlands's governance. While Highlands is a public water system, it operates largely as a private corporation. It is technically owned by the shareholders, those of us that own property in the district. But the board of directors are using the extent of the law to restrict input and avoid the basic citizen oversight that would apply to a public agency. This approach may have worked in 1925, but has no place in today's communities. This is why most mutual water systems are being incorporated into a public utility or gobbled up by an investor-owned utility such as Golden State. Transparency and accountability are enormous concern for Islands Water. They have ignored or refused nearly all of our information requests for even simple things such as meeting minutes. They did finally provide a few years of minutes and financial reports to us last evening, but refused historical information beyond three years. As shareholders, we have a legal right to the information. They have also failed to provide a list of shareholders to us as required by law. Apparently the refrain in the letter they sent to some of you, which stated, "We are co-owned by you, our shareholders," and quote, "As a Highlands shareholder, your voice matters," is simply a talking point and not the way they do business. But despite evidently not having a list of shareholders, Highlands is eager to claim that anyone who wants to challenge the board of directors is not one. I personally attended the February board meeting of Islands Water Company with no issues. At the March meeting, I was kicked out because I did not give the district 24-hour notice of my attendance. While this is technically allowed, while this is technically allowed under the corporation's code, it violates the district's bylaws and is not the best approach to governance. They locked the door behind me when I left and then raised all of our water rates with no direct notice to shareholders or customers. This would not be permitted if Islands was actually a public agency like Conocdy and the city itself. The city feel, feels like decisions on a basic right like access to water should be made in public, not behind a locked door. In a meeting like this one, where the community can share their opinion, even if it may be inaccurate or difficult to hear. I can speak for our staff and I believe I can speak for the council that we are here to transform the community into something better, something that we can all be proud of. While we aren't perfect and much work remains, the past five to seven years in particular have resulted in a significant change in our community that anyone on us can recognize. As a final thought, you may ask, have Highlands and city discuss their disagreements directly? We ask Highlands Board of Directors for a meeting with city council members, but that was refused through their attorney and I quote, "Absolutely no interest in meeting with city representatives." We are frequently adding information to the Clear Lake Water Providers page on the city website. Please read and educate yourself on the facts. It is clear that many representations are being presented as facts. Unfortunately, it's going to take some effort on the part of the community and shareholders to educate themselves about what is really true. Much more information will be forthcoming and Mr. Mayor, thank you for letting me share this.
Thank you for sharing the, the city's perspective on this. Obviously it's a complex issue and I appreciate all of you coming out today and, and sharing your opinion. Uh, it does matter. I know someone mentioned past meetings where, uh, you've come here and, and you've spoken your piece and maybe decisions have gone in a different direction. The city council cares. The city council will also not turn a blind eye to problems we see in the city. Um, and I believe this will come up in future agenda items, uh, future meetings. I encourage you all to attend those meetings as well and, uh, hopefully there we can have more of a back and forth. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate that. We, we do need to, because it was an agenda, we can't have any further deliberation on that.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to item G, the consent agenda. Any council members have any items they'd like to pull? Anyone here in the chamber would like to make a comment on an item on the consent agenda? Madam Clerk, anyone on Zoom?
There are no comments on Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Back to me. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented. I'll say it again.
I have a motion from Councilmember Kramer, a second from Councilmember Sooton. Please vote in your portal.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please bring up the next one. Item seven, uh, discussion and approval of sale of surplus real property located at 14709 Palmer Avenue in Clear Lake. City Manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'll give a brief overview of what's in the staff report. Um, this is a property, uh, with address of 14709 Palmer. So you may be more familiar with Highlands Bar Grill, the old Howard's Grotto. There's a vacant lot, um, on the north side of that. Used to be owned by the Lake County Community Action Agency. That agency, um, you know, I guess, I don't know, vaporized and, um, you know, it was a nonprofit, so the county was not charging it property taxes. Um, so it's, it, uh, because things went kaput, it wasn't something that went through the tech, uh, property tax, uh, auction process for, for default. And so we had to work for kind of a number of years to figure out what to do with this. There was, um, a building on there that the city used Cal Recycle, um, grant to abate, remove the blighted building. Um, but we still had issues with kind of people, you know, abandoning cars and doing things there. So, um, we're able to identify, well, and then another issue there was actually a number of federal tax liens, um, on the agency. Um, after 10 years, those liens fall off unless the agency, um, re-records them and that didn't happen. So that was kind of a window for us as well. Um, anyway, we found, uh, we worked with the deed of trust holder on the, the property and they put it through the foreclosure process. We went ahead and purchased it for $44,000. Um, and so now that, um, E-Lim has purchased the restaurant, we talked to them because as you know, the parking facilities there at the restaurant are not really adequate. And so they have an interest in purchasing that for some initial parking space and maybe some other open space there in the area. So they've agreed to essentially, um, pay the city's cost for acquisition and then paying off the just over $30,000 abatement lien, which we will have to repay um, back to Cal Recycle. So, uh, this was, did go through, the council declared this is surplus property last year. Um, and at this point would recommend authorizing me to, um, execute the necessary documents for sale to Lim.
Thank you, City Manager. Any comments here from the council? Seeing none. Any comments here in the chamber? Madam Clerk, any comments on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'll bring it back to council.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Sooton, a second from Councilmember Kramer. Please vote in your portal.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the next item, consideration of the community development specialist classification and salary range, resolution number 2024 dash 21. Ms. Swanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Honorable Counsel. Tonight, the city council is being asked to approve a new community development specialist classification and the proposed salary range and adopt resolution number 2024 dash 21. As the city works to enrich our community's wellbeing, economic growth and environmental sustainability, the community development specialist would be a vital support role within the community development department. Tasked with a variety of high-level building and planning secretarial and clerical duties to assist the professional staff and the public. Key responsibilities of this position would be clerical and technical support, uh, public interaction, permit processing, record keeping, uh, presentation preparation and contributing to the budget preparation and administration for the building department. Um, this position would be in replacement of the secretary permit technician position and would improve the efficiency of the building and planning department by strengthening the city's engagement with citizens and the commitment to sustainable growth. Tonight, uh, we're asking that the city adopt, the city council adopt resolution number 2024 dash 21. There is no budget adjustment required for this position for this fiscal year because we have savings from currently vacant positions within that department. And I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Councilmember Sooton.
Will there be bilingual support for this person?
Um, the position, uh, we would need a bilingual. It's not required, but it, it would be preferred for sure.
Any other questions from the council? Anyone here in the chamber would like to make a comment? Seeing none, madam. Oh yeah, please come forward.
Just curious as to what the salary range would be for this position as compared to the position before.
Ms. Swanson?
Or can I know that?
Oh yeah, we can share that with you.
I think it's in our report.
Oh.
So it looks, Ms. Swanson, you can clarify?
Sure, sure. I'd be happy to. Uh, this position is at range 29, which, um, the city has a list of ranges that we go through. And that monthly salary is $36.94 a month to $44.90 a month.
Okay.
So that's 3,000.
Along with the regular benefits and everything that.
Correct. It's a full-time position.
Okay. Thank you.
And that salary information is right on the resolution. If you have an agenda, the, the agendas are also online, as is the, uh, the pay bands for all city employees. All right, um, any other questions here in the chamber? Yes, come forward, please.
I just was curious. This is my first time to a city council meeting. I'm fascinated. Um, hearts go out to y'all because, um, past president of Moose Lodge, and it's like, oh, this is brilliant. Anyway, just on this position, is it going to be a, a new hire or are we moving somebody else into it? Or what was the, the thoughts on this new position?
Ms. Swanson? Or?
We did do a recruitment for a similar position. We have a list of eligibility. Um, so we, we will be running a recruitment. We will be, this isn't a promotional.
Okay. I was just curious if it was going to be open to applications and whatnot. So, all right, my, my, my other concern is bilingual is preferred, but is it, it's just frustrating that it seems like the verbiage is such that it's going to be mandatory because that's just how it works in our society now, but it's just my two cents.
Sorry, just to clarify, you prefer it to be mandatory?
Well, the, the question from, uh, Mr. Sooton was, is, is it mandatory to be bilingual? Which of course has to come up in our society now and it's not required, but it's preferred. And I just was curious. Anyway, I just, you know, my concern, I just, it's frustrating when somebody to get into a position like this is going to have to be virtually bilingual to qualify for it because that's just where we're at. Anyway, I just wanted to encourage you to be open-minded as far as your hiring practices. Thank you.
Sir, I appreciate it. Any other comments here in the chamber? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, any on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom.
All right, I will bring it back to council.
Mr. Mayor, oh, I could just make a couple of quick comments based on some of the things that came up. So, um, the secretary permit tech position was vacated because of a promotion, uh, within the city. And so because of, we just took a look at things and decided maybe someone with a little bit more specialized skills would be appropriate. So just wanted to share that to council. Um, and then related to the bilingual, I mean, um, you know, most of the growth, population growth that we're seeing in this city now is, um, a lot of young Hispanic families that are moving out of the North Bay. So it is more and more important, um, to have bilingual speakers. Um, of course, that really limits our pool if it was something that we require, but, um, to the extent that someone doesn't have that, we do have, um, staff in place that are, you know, we ask them to get a certification and they get extra incentive on their salary for being able to read, write and speak, um, Spanish. And so we do have, we, we need more folks that can speak Spanish, but we do have, um, uh, options in place so that if a Spanish-only speaker comes in, that we can still do business.
And any, uh, any city employee can go through that training and that certification? Great. Thank you. All right. Any comments from council? If not.
Resolution number 2024 dash 21, a resolution of the city council, the city of Clear Lake, approved and job description and salary range for the community development specialist position.
I have a motion with Councilmember Sooton, a second from Vice Mayor Overton. Please vote in your portal. I have a motion with Councilmember Slaton, a second from Vice Mayor Overton. Please vote in your portal.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on to item I, City Manager and Councilmembers' report. Uh City Manager, anything to add?
Yeah, just a couple of more things. Um I'll be brief. We have, I think, six projects out to bid right now. Um three of them are roads projects and three of them are um sign-related projects that are part of the Clean California Grant. Um hopefully, there'll be more of both of those packages coming out soon. We have one more road package that um we're expecting to put out to bid, but the three that are out now, um I think is 19.7 miles. Um so will be our biggest year yet. Um they had the pre-construction meeting on those today and um bids are due coming up. We're expecting to be able to award bids on all three of those projects um at our next meeting on June 6th. So that's that's exciting. Uh we submitted our application for the SS4A grant, which the council approved at the last meeting. So this is about $17 million for a streetscape project along Lake Shore Drive. Um so really excited about the package that came together on that. And then um we're still working through the landslide project up on Lake Shore. We're expecting some initial clearing work to begin um next week on that. And um then, you know, some of the work will be a little bit further down the line, but had a meeting with Caltrans today and um things are, things are looking good on that. Um when we did present that to council, uh there was a sort of different approach that was proposed and um the estimate for that was as high as $4 million. Um the geotechnical engineer recommended a little different approach that is probably going to end up being um a little cheaper, but we're still expecting it to be 100% covered uh by the Federal Highway Administration. And then the final thing I wanted to share, um you know, maybe inject a little positivity in. Um so we had a bass tournament um last week. We haven't had a lot of them lately and we're trying to put some efforts into bringing more of them back to Redbud Park. I know Councilmember Kramer in particular has been uh working on that a little bit. And so um we put some effort, extra effort in uh with our public work staff and police department to make sure that those folks had a good experience while they were here. And uh I got an email from Sergeant Proll, who spent some time out there that I very short, I thought I would quickly read for the council. Uh Saturday afternoon, I went and watched the weigh-in for about an hour. I was contacted by a subject involved with the tournament. He had nothing but good things to say about the park. He commented that the last time he was here was three years ago and was afraid to sleep at night because of the amount of questionable subjects walking around at all hours. He added, "It was now like a new city." He had actually saw himself and my officers arrest someone in the park by the trucks and boat trailers that morning and was very appreciative of our presence. He added, "They had recently done a tournament in Lakeport and found our city and park to be better." That's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Kramer?
Uh yes, not a lot. Um I had an RRA Risk Reduction Authority meeting last week. Uh we discussed a uh grant that we're trying to facilitate uh for biomass um to become a biomass broker, basically, and and encourage biomass projects in Lake County. Um on yeah. Oh, had an APC meeting uh actually yesterday. Those were basically the two meetings. They were, the one yesterday was very short. We unfortunately missed the flag raising because of it, but um there wasn't a lot there. Uh Councilman Perdak might have more on that. And last but certainly not least, we have a Lower Lake Days upcoming on Memorial Day weekend and hope to see everybody there. I have.
Councilmember Perdak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um yeah, to echo Councilmember Kramer, I did attend the area planning council for Lake County yesterday. The only thing that I would add to Councilmember Kramer's report is we did accept um the bid from our current um provider, which is uh Davy Bates Consulting um to continue their work to, for Lake County Transit and the Lake Planning Authority. Um they have been the vendor for a number of years now and they were the sole bidder um in this last go around. Uh we also had an Ava meeting, abandoned vehicle abatement um meeting following the uh APC meeting. Um we were able to conduct business. Sadly, I just want to report that removing RVs and trailer trailers and some other vehicles is very expensive business, um sometimes over $3,000. And unfortunately, the funding that's coming from the state for our Eva program is woefully inadequate. Um the committee will be reaching out and looking for ways to reduce costs and hopefully improve some of that funding um so that doesn't fall wholly on the back of our general fund to remove those vehicles, bait vehicles and and uh RVs. I do want to thank city staff and the city police department code enforcement for the work they've been doing and for the uh funding to do their best and try to keep our city as safe and clean and meeting with our uh mission statement. And I believe that concludes my report.
You, Councilmember Slaton.
I went to the uh Laffco meeting uh yesterday morning and uh two things really happened is that that Mr. Don Beno, the gentleman has been running Laffco for, I think he said, 23 years, is uh retiring and we hired a lady named Mark Hyler as the new executive officer with and also a little contract for Mr. Beno if she needs some help to uh help her out in the years to come too. There are some transitions in the different projects, so that's about it.
Vice Mayor Overton?
I have nothing to report.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I do have one addition. I've got, I also had a meeting with the Shakespeare at the Lake um board. Uh they're going to be bringing the play here on August uh third and fourth, I believe. It's a Friday and Saturday, uh which will be, of course, out here in in Austin Park. And I'll be more more on that later on, and I need to talk to you, Councilwoman.
Do we know what the play is?
Yeah, and I just forgot the name, but.
Do you know what role you're playing?
Hey. All I'm doing is trying to uh all I'm trying to do is organize the staff. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for pointing out that.
Well, thank you, Russ, and uh thank you to to everyone. Um for you coming out today for uh council, all the organizations that they talk about are doing all they can to help our county and our community. Um the barrier pantry is is not as high as you might think it is. Um anyone who wants to lend a hand and and pick up a shovel or um come say hi and help out, we could we're we're looking for folks who care about this community to pitch in. And if you have any questions or or ways to participate, please reach out to me. Uh on Wednesday, we had our flag raising right out here in Austin Park. And if you drove by, uh it's a massive, beautiful flag donated by the Park Study Club. We had uh some some first graders from the elementary school over here, some singers from uh the high school. Um our uh police department, city staff, some folks from veterans organizations, and of course, uh I was there. Um trying to hold up a massive flag with a bunch of first graders. So I got my workout in. Um but a wonderful event. Thank you all for those who attended and put it together. Um and that's it for me. Um any future agenda items? Okay. If not, we are now going to move to closed session. Thank you all for attending. Um we will be back June 6th. Hope to see a lot of you here again.
After a short break.
Yeah.